So is Chris not here tonight?
Not, no.
He's not?
I don't think so.
Who's doing the financials?
Sorry?
Who's going to speak to the financials?
The councillors, I would suggest.
Well, that'll be interesting.
Chris Titzel's not here tonight?
You're going to talk to the financials, huh? Bruce's.
Pete again?
Yeah, I can.
Mr Harriet, what for the catch and all that?
Well, we are at that stage. Because I haven't even seen it.
No bite.
Anna, you're right?
Just give it a fair warning, Phil.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm not on you.
I haven't seen it.
Bill? You're right. That's all right. All right.
Bring the afternoon herald sun? Oldie by the goody.
Harold in the evening?
Say Harold, eh?
It's just Harold, son.
You're old to me, that you did know that.
I try, now I know more. You remember it.
All right, I think we're good to go. Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our guests in the gallery tonight. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting, opening it at 5.30 with, we the Greater Shepparton City Council begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Please note with the privacy notice that this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Item number three, apologies councillors, we need to note the apologies of councillor Hazelman, councillor Sutton and councillor Summer. Would a councillor like to move the motion please? Councillor O'Sevary?
I'll move that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Item number four, declarations of conflict of interest. Do any councillors have any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? No. Item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Is any item of the minutes opposed?
I'll move the recommendation on page four, that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held Saturday, July 2018, as circulated, be confirmed as a motion.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Do I have a second please councillor Abdullah? All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. We don't have any public question time tonight, so we'll now move over to the next page, which is page five. We have a recommendation, 7.1, Greater Shepparton Safe Communities Advisory Committee Terms of Reference is on page five and the recommendation is also on page five. Would a councillor like to move a motion please?
I'd like to move the motion, the recommendation as a motion, Madam Mayor, that the council approve the revised Greater Shepparton Safe Communities Advisory Committee Terms of Reference.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Adam. Councillor O'Sevary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, thank you. It's more an administrative process than anything else and I think it's all self-explanatory and contained within the document itself.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Just to say that this is a normal process. Every so often we upgrade and update our advisory committee terms of references and this is just keeping in line with that.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors now go to item 7.2, Merigum Five Year Review on page eight. The recommendation is also on page eight. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page eight as a motion. The recommendation says that the council endorses the updated Merigum Community Plan 2018 and acknowledge the valuable contribution Merigum residents have made to update the community plan.
Thank you very much councillor Abdullah. Do I have a second please?
I have a second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Giovanetti. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yep, so quickly, this matter is about the update of Merigum Community Plan. Merigum Community Plan was, is owned by the Merigum Community. There was this Merigum Community Group that was formed in 2004 and Community has been involved in the planning since 2012. So the plan was formulated in 2012. It involved the local community members and the community plan is very much owned by the community and it is supported by council. So this motion, this recommendation is about endorsing the updated Merigum Community Plan and also about acknowledging the contributions of the Merigum residents. So we have, Merigum is a small community of around 600 plus people and Community is very friendly and they value the family environment of the town. So the development of this plan and update of this plan really shows that how, how much involved this community is in the betterment of the area. So I fully endorse the update and also acknowledge the contributions made by the community.
Thank you very much councillor Abdullah. Councillor Giovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as our community planning is concerned, I think it's one of the things that councillor does extremely well. I've had involvement with a number of the community plans in our municipality and I think the work that the community planning team and the members of each of the communities contribute towards the plan is excellent. I think, as I've said before, I think it's beholden on us as councillors to try to ensure where possible that we get as many of the recommendations in the community plans through as we possibly can.
Thank you very much councillor Giovanetti. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. They will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 7.3, Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Advisory Committee Nomination Guidelines for the Honour Roll and the Junior Honour Roll on page 12 and the recommendation is also on page 12. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 12 as a motion, that council endorsed the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Information and Nomination Guidelines for the following listed categories to open the nomination process. One being the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Honour Roll and two, the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Junior Honour Roll.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Patterson. Councillor Giovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a committee quite close to my heart and that of councillor Patterson's. We've been on the Sports Hall of Fame Committee in there for a number of years. There has been a lot of work going to developing the guidelines for the Honour Roll and the Junior Honour Roll. This follows on from the very successful launch we had last year with the nominees to the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame. I would like to acknowledge the work of Don Kilgower and Margot Costelanian and Belinda Connor in the development of these categories and also the nomination process. I'd also like to advise all members of the community that we're on August 31st, we're having an evening to launch the Honour Roll and Junior Honour Roll, but it will also be an opportunity for members of the community to come and view the Sports Hall of Fame Honour Roll. It's going to be displayed in the council foyer area.
Thank you very much councillor Giovanetti. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'm very much looking forward to 21st of August. It'll be the 12th, 12 month anniversary of our launch, which was a very successful night. And as great as the council develops and our region develops, we're in a position to be able to recognise these people who've done a great job in our community, in the sporting field and recognise and give them their due rewards for the work and the benefits they've brought to the region, their sporting field. And as councillor Giovanetti said, there's a lot of passionate people on the committee that have really, really got behind this and made it work. So I'm looking forward to that. The 12 month anniversary, we'll have it down there and we'll have all those banners out and flying along and it'll be a little bit of what it was last year, so looking forward to it immensely.
Thank you councillor Patterson. That has gone fast, that 12 months. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yeah, I do also just like to say myself that it is an exciting opportunity to recognise, you know, the incredible sporting achievements in our community and there is some fantastic success stories, so I'm sure we'll see some of those with the next lot of nominations. All right, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed.
I'd just like to point out, Madam Mayor, that if councillor Patterson is there on the 21st of August, he'll be there on his own. It's actually the 31st.
Oh, okay, we better get the date right. He's having his own party. He's starting early celebrations. Okay, thank you for that.
I don't expect just to walk up and get us a take, Bruce. You have to be there well until early.
Good idea, Dennis.
All right, we'll now go to item 8.1, the July 2018 Monthly Financial Report on page 16. The recommendation is also on page 16. Would a councillor please like to move a motion?
I'd be happy to move that motion, Madam Mayor. The recommendation on page 16 would be the motion that the council receive and note the July 2018 Monthly Financial Report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor O'Sevary? Councillor Giovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, only briefly, Madam Mayor. Mr Titzel's not here, so I'll give a very brief summary and that is that being the first month of the year, there really is not a heck of a lot to report. We really can't pick any trends and/or changes to what our budgeted figures are at this particular point in time. I can note that all of the projections in relation to the budget are on track at the moment and Mr Titzel in the report has indicated that the budget figures for the 2018/19 financial figure, our financial year, which are there for people to read if they wish.
Thank you very much councillor O'Sevary. Would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr Harriet, is there anything you would like to add in regard to that report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I could add that the operating performance is mostly influenced in this early report by recognising rates early in the month of July. This will sort itself out in the coming months over time and the working capital figures are very flush due in large to the cash balance at the end of the financial year, 30th of sixth, being greater than what we thought. And this in turn was as a result of three major Capital Works projects being deferred and they were the Cosgrove Three due to timing, the Bella Clava Road intersection due to the bus interchange issue and Plant due to lead time issues. Apart from that, I agree with councillor Giovanetti that all financial indicators remain within the expected ranges and Capital Works Programme is underway and we look forward to a very good financial year yet again.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors will now go to item 8.2 on page 18, which is Contracts Awarded Under Delegation. The recommendation is also on page 18. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? O'Sevary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion, that the council note the publicly advertised contracts awarded under delegated authority and tenders that have been advertised but yet to be awarded.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Sevary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is something that we see every month and it's an example of the transparency of council in the sense that you can see what contracts are coming up, what have been tendered, what have been awarded and those that have yet to be similarly done. Looking through it, there's nothing that I particularly want to speak to. Pretty much run of the mill, so I won't.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, councillor O'Sevary said it is a small list of normal and that will be to do with the budget just being passed. This process after the budget's passed, the funds are there, allocated, they go to budget and that's what will be happening as we'll work our way through the financial year. That list will getting bigger and bigger and bigger and hopefully towards the end of the financial year, it gets smaller and smaller and smaller. A lot of work comes.
Thank you very much councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just want to draw attention to a couple of the requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded. Obviously, the Shepparton Art Museum is a very important one that's probably going to fill our minds and our conversations for the next couple of years at least, so that's very important. So we definitely trust that we will select the correct construction company for that particular job, but also the provision of management for the Shepparton Sale Yards. Our Sale Yards are the single most profitable enterprise that this council partakes in, so that's extremely important. Our previous managers have done a fantastic job over many, many years. They're moving out now, I think they're retiring, so that's going to be very important as well and I trust we'll make the right selection there as well.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to item 8.3, Appointment of Members to the Shepparton Show Me Committee on page 21. The recommendation is also on page 21. Would a councillor like to move a motion please?
I'll move that recommendation as a motion, Madam Mayor, on page 21, points parts one and two inclusive.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor O'Sevary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity. Look, it's self-explanatory in the sense that it's a renewal of the committee members. Some have left and some have asked, have been made application to be re-elected. There was a process involved which is contained within the body of the report. I think there was nine of us that considered the various applicants. As part of the process, I'd like to firstly acknowledge those committee members that were on the Shepparton Show Me who have finished up, namely Kerry Donaldson and Cruz Patel. I thank them on behalf of the Shepparton Show Me for their contribution, their involvement and their wealth of ideas. The second point that I wish to make is I'd like to congratulate Shane Sailey, Stephen Schneider and John Montagna. Shane Sailey and Stephen, sorry, Shane Sailey and John Montagna are what I call long-term passionate members of the Shepparton Show Me Committee and have stood for appointment again and they've been successful. And I'd also like to welcome on board Olivia Smith and I think all those people will contribute greatly to the continuing enthusiasm that Shepparton Show Me operates under.
Thank you very much councillor O'Sevary. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just to add to councillor O'Sevary's comments, I think it's interesting and it's pleasing to see new faces and new people come on board. Now, Olivia Smith, I congratulate her for her appointment and hopefully she can encourage other new members to continually refresh the committee.
Great, thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? I'd also like to comment that it's actually, yeah, great to see new faces and I think it's really great to see a long-term businessman like Stephen Schneider still having the passion for his business community, so I'm sure all of these new members are going to have, you know, something really great to contribute and we look forward to that, to seeing what they can, you know, absolutely contribute to move forward with Shep Show Me. All right, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to item 9.1, Instrument of Appointment and Authorization Planning and Environment Act for 1987 on page 25. The recommendation is on page 25 and page 26. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move the recommendation as the motion contained on page 25 and 26, points one, two, three and four inclusive.
Thank you very much councillor O'Sevary. Do I have a second please? Councillor Giovanetti? Councillor O'Sevary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an administrative process, this, that needs to be implemented upon a changing of personnel and compliance with various legislative requirements.
Thank you very much councillor Giovanetti. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Look, this is one of the few areas where under the relevant acts that we work under, in this instance, the Planning and Environment Act, that the CEO isn't able to delegate directly to the staff responsible for these roles and it's a requirement, the council has to do it, so that's why it's come to us today, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Giovanetti. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.2, Environmentally Sustainable Design for Subdivisions in Regional Victoria on page 28. The recommendation is on page 29. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the motion on page number 20, recommendation on page 29, that the council receive and note the environmentally sustainable design for subdivisions in Regional Victoria, proof of concept and cost benefit analysis prepared by ACOM Private Limited.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please councillor Patterson? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so this recommendation is about the project that Greater Shepparton City Council carried out in partnership with eight other regional councils. This was about assessment of, assessment around environmentally sustainable design for greenfield subdivisions. This project had two parts. One was the proof of concept and the other one was about cost benefit analysis. And so now the environmentally sustainable design for subdivisions in Regional Victoria has been received. The part of, as part of this report, there were some key suggestions around making the subdivisions environmentally sustainable. Obviously, there are some very interesting and some of them are sort of low-cost, low-regret interventions that have been recommended. The recommendations are here on page 28 and also in the detailed report. So from, so the next stage of this project includes development of planning and educational, education tools so that to, to integrate environmentally sustainable design principles in the planning scheme. So that's, so the recommendation is about receiving this project report.
Thank you very much councillor Abdullah. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I think councillor Abdullah's covered it extremely well.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to item 9.3, Greater Shepparton Cultural Heritage Awards Guidelines for 2018 on page 33. The recommendation is also on page 33. Would a councillor like to move the motion please? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page 33 as a motion. The recommendation says that the council adopted the Cultural Heritage Awards Guidelines 2018 and resolved to host a cultural heritage award ceremony in the 2018-2019 financial year.
Thank you very much. Councillor, sorry, who seconded that one? I'm just trying to remember.
No one.
Oh, sorry, no one. Oh, you just moved it. Sorry, do I have a second please? O'Sevary, thank you. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so this, so the Greater Shepparton, Greater Shepparton's Heritage Advisory Committee that was formed in 2012 has recommended, has updated the cultural heritage awards guidelines. These awards were started as a biennial programme and the first ceremony of this award was held in 2013. The main purpose of cultural heritage award, awards is basically to acknowledge our heritage and to promote good practices around conservation of the, of our heritage. So this is an important event. Obviously, the guidelines have been revised in this instance to streamline them and to simplify the programme. I must say that the cultural heritage, sorry, the Heritage Advisory Committee has got many passionate members from our community, many, many knowledgeable and expert, experts are available to us and those members have obviously looked at the guidelines and come up with some, some revisions. One of the key revision is around the categories of awards, so this year the award category has moved from eight to nine categories. There was a category around student award and that has been revised to youth award, so instead of focusing only on students, it's about youth and youth and obviously the age consideration will be taken into account. So these are some of the guideline updates. So yeah, so I would fully endorse the heritage awards guidelines and also to host, host an award ceremony in 2018-29, 19 financial year.
Thank you very much councillor O'Sevary. Would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add my comments that I think this is a really important ceremony that we're hoping to have, which we will have, obviously, because obviously heritage has become a very poignant and controversial issue over the past 10 or so years. It's in the minds of a lot of councils, obviously, and also our community, so I think this will only assist in encouraging and acknowledgement and, and, and understanding of heritage and how important it is in the Greater Shepparton area. So these type of awards will just serve to actually bring it to front of mind and to really get the community to understand how important it is to preserve our heritage. Thank you.
Very true, thank you very much councillor Adam. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.4, Construction of a New Country Fire Authority Fire Station at Carrabock Park, Shepparton on page 37. The recommendation is on page 38. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Giovanetti?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 38 as a motion which contains items one, two, three, four and five in relation to the proposed CFA building.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please councillor Patterson? Councillor Giovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Look, as we're aware, the CFA has been looking for an additional location for some time, considering that the Maud Street premises is probably now outdated as far as their requirements are concerned. They have been negotiating with council officers for some time where they identified that Carrabock Park, which is the old Shepparton Youth Club Hall and a block of land in front of it, the CFA's identified that that would be ideal for their new station, which I would totally agree with. It's great to have the facility up at the north end of town and we'll now have one down the south end of town as well. Carrabock Park is managed by a, by council, has a committee of management and in turn this will transfer over to the CFA once all of the requirements have been ticked off. There are other users currently on, utilizing the old Shep Youth Club facilities, being the Shep Youth Club themselves, Shepparton Ace is another and a number of the smaller groups. All of those groups will be accommodated elsewhere and I believe that they are all happy with the arrangements that have been made on their behalf.
Thank you very much councillor Giovanetti. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, this is the first legal step regarding the new CFA building. It is exciting. It's long overdue, certainly restricted to what they can house down on the current site. Council had earmarked Carrabock Park for retardation basin that was going to be built there to service the surrounding area. We still can do that, but involves shifting Ace College and the Youth Club Hall. We have negotiated and it's a great outcome for everyone. It's a win-win situation, literally, for both of those venues. Ace College will get a new, will get a big handout, not a handout, but a lift up towards their new college and the Youth Club Hall, which has basically been neglected over the last few years for lack of users, will be incorporated down the road in the park. So it is really is exciting. Two of the main user groups of that area will have a better set of, better infrastructure to work with. We'll get our retardation basin and the community...
We'll get our retardation basin, and the community will get a fire station that is worthy of this area all at no cost, council, so I think it's a, it's a great outcome for everyone. And I congratulate everyone that's been working on it, has been going on for quite a while. And I congratulate everyone on the outcome, it is literally a win-win all round.
yes, absolutely agree, thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion councillor Adam?
thank you, madam mayor, yeah, look, just to echo the words of councillor Patterson and councillor Jevanetti, I think he was, yes, thank you. This is the beginning of the end of a long quest the CFA have been on. So it's pleasing to see that we've finally found a very appropriate location, I think, and all councillors, I think, will agree. And as councillor Patterson said, I think it's a win-win for everyone. It, it works out well for the CFA, obviously, and for the current users, they'll be re-accommodated in better facilities, so it's one of the times that I can say that we've come to a very, very happy ending.
very good, thank you councillor Adam, would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? councillor Abdullah?
just one small comment here, of course, it's, it's very pleasing to see this positive outcome, and as it has been said, that it's a win-win. I would only hope, I would also hope that at some stage during this whole process, the history behind, and we were talking about heritage now, so the heritage of the Carrabock Park, Carrabock Park is maintained through some signage or through some kind of, some kind of documentation so that we don't lose all the legacy and the history of this, this site. So that is something that I have come to know from our, from my various discussions with community members. And yes, it is positive, it's a positive development, thanks.
thank you very much councillor Abdullah, would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
And I think it's also important tonight, I'll just add that there were some roadblocks, you know, along the way with this decision. So it's great that council has been able to work very closely with the CFA to resolve any issues that we did have, and get to this fantastic outcome. Some, I think we're all in agreement, so it is a great outcome. It was a bumpy road, I mean, the CFA looked at many sites, and they've come back to this site. And it's very fortunate that, you know, council has, you know, we have stepped up, and we have really, really helped them resolve the issues we've had and come to this recommendation tonight.
Okay, we'll all now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to item 9.5, Greater Shepherd and Regional City Deal and our Ask of Government. Would a councillor please like to move a motion? The, sorry, it's on page 55, and the recommendation is on page 56.
I'll move that motion, oh, that recommendation as a motion, thank you, madam mayor. Listed on page 56, actually, it's a short recommendation, I'll read it out, actually.
okay, thank you councillor Adam.
the council endorsed the Greater Shepherd and City Deal and the state election ask of government as key advocacy documents for the Greater Shepherd and region.
thank you very much, do I have a second to please? councillor Ozzavari, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
yeah, look, I will, city deal, that's a term that became rather used in the last two or three years. For a while, I don't think many councillors understood exactly what a city deal was. I can just speak to my own experience when I was mayor with Peter, our CEO. We spent a lot of time mulling over exactly what a city deal was, but I think in the end, we got, we gained an understanding. I'm sure you have as well, madam mayor, now. It's basically asking the government, asking things that we feel are priorities for our region and our, and our town. These aren't new asks that we have there, we prioritize them, package them in a nice little package. And hopefully, it'll land in the, in the orbit of the appropriate ministers.
thank you very much councillor Adam, councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
no, thank you, madam.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion councillor Jevanetti?
thank you, madam mayor. I had the pleasure of attending a meeting that we had here last week, where a number of organisations were represented discussing our Shepherd and City Deal to ensure that we have got the right areas that are going up before government for funding. And it was good, we had the hospital, the universities, and a number of other local organisations that all contributed to the development of this city deal. Sorry, Committee for Greater Shepherd and also involved, should put them in. But yeah, it was a great opportunity to get everyone's feedback and information, and it was a really worthwhile exercise.
thank you very much councillor Jevanetti, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? councillor Abdullah?
yeah, I would like to say the same things that councillor Jevanetti has just mentioned. But it's really pleasing to see that in our advocacy, different stakeholders, all stakeholders of our Greater Shepherd and region, they are united. And as it was mentioned, that, you know, there was, there was discussion that, that took place a few days ago, and community leaders, representatives of different community organizations, they were there. So everybody was across this development, and this, these two documents, they have got the support and endorsement of our key stakeholders and key community organizations and leaders. So it's a very strong advocacy tool.
yeah, thank you very much. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? To the motion? councillor Patterson?
yeah, it's a great feeling for our representatives, mayor and CEO to be going to Melbourne and realistically not feeling they're going down to flog a dead horse. We've actually had some success. And it's a lot more exciting going down there, I can tell you, to imagine that, you know, Passion Doral has been great success in that, not going into the rationale behind why I believe it's happened. But it is hap, has happened, and there's lots of those things, the hospitals, you know, that realistically, things happen. So when you go down there now, you're more inclined to be excited, because, you know, you can get a really good positive result. And I'm hoping like hell it will continue, and whatever particular party's in power, that continues and we get what we do deserve, you know, there's an argument that says we've missed out for a long time. Hopefully, we've turned the corner.
thank you councillor Patterson, would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion?
so I'll just add that it's an exciting time for Greater Shepherd, and a lot of these projects are already progressing. So you're right councillor Patterson, we have already some funding on some of these projects. So it's exciting to think now we can go forward, we're heading to Canberra tomorrow to actually meet with some ministers, meet with the prime minister, apparently still. And putting our argument, you know, we've been lobbying for well over 12 months in this space, so it's not new. It's actually part of ongoing lobbying, working extremely closely, as we said, with other community members, committee for, also with our local MPs, and I think that's, that's the thing to be mindful of. It's all of those voices, you know, speaking up loudly together collaboratively, that has led to our success. So it's an exciting time, as I said, we have some great asks of government there, we've already started many of these projects, we need to complete these projects. So as you've mentioned councillor Patterson, it's, it's exciting, it's progressing. We've got to be, you know, in their faces right now, heading into the election. It's a crucial time for us as councillors, for our MPs, for all of our committee members that are supporting these projects to be seen and to be heard, and as I said, we're heading to Canberra tomorrow, so it's exciting times for Greater Shepherd. And certainly, we're all lobbying extremely hard to get, you know, great results.
All right, so we'll go to the vote on this document, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 10 on page 60, tabled motions, we have nil received. Item 11, reports from council delegates to other bodies, we have nil received. Item 12, reports from special committees and advisory committees, we have nil received. Item 13, notice of motion amendment or rescission, we have nil received. Item 14, documents for signing and sealing, we have nil received. We now go to item 15.1, councillors' community interaction and briefing programme on page 61. We have a recommendation on page 62, would a councillor like to move a motion, please? councillor Ozzavari, what would you like to move?
I would like to, excuse me, madam mayor, I would like to move the recommendation on page 62 that the summary of the councillors' community interaction and briefing programme be received as the motion.
thank you very much, do I have a second to please councillor Jevanetti? councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
thank you, madam mayor, it is self-explanatory.
yeah, thank you very much councillor Jevanetti.
I think councillor Ozzavari has summed it up very eloquently.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, motion carried, unopposed. We'll now go to item 16.1 on page 63, the recommendation is on page 71. The item 16.1 is recorded assemblies of councillors, would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move that motion, madam.
councillor Adam?
would the council note the record of assemblies of councillors?
thank you very much, do I have a second to please? councillor Patterson, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
well, in the great words of councillor Ozzavari, I think it's very self-explanatory.
okay, it's a different motion, but that's okay, councillor Patterson?
yeah, I'll speak to it, actually, just to drag it out past the 40-minute mark.
okay.
basically, when you look at this, it gives other people a good idea of what councillor, councillors actually do. There's a lot more that happens than what actually comes to a meeting and be passed. These are all our briefings, et cetera, where we've attended. There's a lot of work goes on that people don't really see until you have a look at this and see where we're being briefed and et cetera, and advised. It is worth having a look at times from the general rate post perspective to have a look and see what is involved. That's a little doomy, thank you.
thank you councillor.
madam mayor, councillor Patterson has two more minutes to exceed 20 minutes.
okay, we might fill that time in. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried. Councillors, we go to item 17, urgent business not included on the agenda, on page 72, there is none received. So I now declare this meeting closed.